That's what I called for.
We all hit the same button at the same time.
I, I can't hear him, Mac. What was he saying?
Kind of like there were two motions at the same time, so.
All, 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 all we can do is we can, um, accept the, uh, the report with a motion and then ask for a modification to deal with the letter.
Who did you recognize as a motion party?
So are you going to second the motion, Willie?
I have a question. Who did you recognize? And we're the same.
Commissioner Adams, make a motion.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Now, the, uh, it was read and also Natalie is asking to, uh, uh, establish a letter as well, so that would be the modification in the motion that we've developed. Going once?
I would go as a second line. I would have to ask the motion party to accept those and, uh, approve, uh, support letter.
That, that, you're, you're right at that point now, so, uh, ask that question.
I did.
Okay, all those in favor in accepting the report, your motion has been established?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. Um, before I move on, a letter, how do you wish to handle that, commissioners?
What letter are you talking about?
Uh, I can't hear him very well. Um, Mac, could you explain to him?
So, Commissioner, um, you had on the agenda, you have the, um, period, so it's a consideration of a support letter for any EDC Utah project response. In your packet, we have a letter that correlates with that item that they just discussed. And so it's pretty much including the program itself and our willingness to, to, um, put it completely. Natalie, there's.
As a second to the motion, I stated that I will go ahead and consider and request of the motioning party to include the letter of support that was mentioned by Natalie. Um, what, what's wrong with that?
Our work.
Yeah? It's just a simple statement.
Okay, commissioners, that's the reason why I asked. A motion and a second was established. The modification is a very simple thing that Mr. Gray Eyes is asking for. All you do is and you insert and acknowledge that, and then it becomes to be a part of the vote to that effect. So now we voted on, on the report, and I, I, I asked several times and he asked me the same, same question again. So now I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for another motion to, to develop that, what, uh, Commissioner Gray Eyes has asked for.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, do I have a second?
I'm making that very difficult, but I'll second it.
It's a very simple process, and thank you very much, and, uh, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, thank you, Natalie. Um, any other last comment, Natalie, before we move on?
Uh, just to clarify, um, so that letter specifically is a support for a request for information on, that's attached in your agenda if you read through it. It's a request for information from EDC Utah to support a greenhouse project as well. Um, and so there's a more lengthy letter included in your commission meeting minutes than the blurb that I read through, that would be included in that welcome community profile. So just some clarity, um, clarification for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comment, commissioners?
None here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mac?
All right, the next item on the agenda here, um, it's number five, your business action items. Um, the first item on here is consideration and approval of the 2019 county fiscal audit and report. This is by, um, this presentation will be given, uh, by our auditing company, Larson, um, and Company PC. Let's see, this is, uh, a report that will be given by John Hatterley, who just recently completed our audit.
Okay. All right, John.
All right. Do you guys hear me all right?
I can hear you.
All right, perfect. So like Mac said, we, we just completed the audit for 2019. Um, I'll just, I won't take a lot of your time. I know that it's a short meeting and just a couple of things I want to go over real quick. The opinion on the financial statement is an unqualified opinion or an unmodified opinion. You'll hear those terms, uh, used interchangeably, um. The required supplementary information, so the management's discussion analysis, and then the information related to the pension and the, the road infrastructure and your, um, general budget, they are required to be with the financial statements, but they're not a part of the basic financial statement, so we don't give opinions on those sections. Um, but the combining statements of the non-major funds and then the single audit or the, the federal award audit, um, that opinion always follows our audit opinion. Um, we re, we, we report on those sections as they relate to the financial statement instead of the whole, so it is also an unmodified opinion. Um, a couple of quick things that we'll go over. Well, let me go over the findings first. So a few things I need to communicate to you. Just remember that there's always estimates in the financial statements, and over time those estimates can change, and as, as our audit team is performing the audit, we identify what those estimates are and make sure that they're consistent over time and that they're reasonable, so you don't have large fluctuation of financial data year to year. Um, there weren't any difficulties in performing the audit. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements that we're aware of. Um, there were no disagreements with management. Um, we get a management letter, a representation letter from John David and Mac, um, that they've been forthcoming with all the information that we've requested, that they're not aware of any fraud, they're not aware of any, um, litigation that we haven't been made aware of, um, there's not any compliance issues that, that they're aware of. Um, the whole point of that letter is really just a full disclosure, so when I'm reviewing all of the audit work and the, and the results of our tests and the financial statements, and I'm getting ready to issue an opinion, um, I can be comfortable with that opinion because, um, the county's been forthcoming with all the information, uh, contained in that letter. Um, consultations with other accountants, uh, if there, if there is an issue that arises and there's a disagreement between our team and the county, um, the county is more than welcome to go out and get a third, a third-party opinion from another independent auditor, auditing firm. Um, the only thing that we require is that we also have access to that same third party so that we can all get together and come to a consensus and move on with the, with the audit. All right, findings this year, um, the first one was the budgetary compliance, and this is, it's different funds and different departments every year, but this year, um, it was the two enterprise funds that were over budget. Um, so our recommendation is just, really just, it's kind of a cat and mouse game near the end of the year to make sure that you're aware of all the things that are gonna come, come in. Um, invoices that typically come in after year end that have to be accrued back, things of that nature, and just make sure that you have enough budget to cover those, those expenditures. Um, and then if you need to, then, uh, have a public hearing to amend the budget or move budget from other funds, um, to cover for those expenditures. Uh, the second one is deficit fund balances, so there were three, um, funds that actually went into a deficit position this year. And it's not so much, the finding isn't so much that they went into a deficit position. It's, um, the requirement is when you have a fund that's in a deficit net position, um, or in a negative position, then you're required to, in the ensuing budget, have a line item in your budget to decrease that budget by 5% of the anticipated revenue of that fund in the next period. Um, and so that's what the finding is, is that, that it hadn't been budgeted for yet. Uh, when I talked to John David, and the reason why it didn't get done was that the county really wasn't aware that they were gonna be in a negative position at year end when the budget was created. Um, because the budget was created a couple of months before year end, um, there were some expenditures and things that came in that, that kind of threw them into that negative position. So really, our recommendation is to, whenever you have a public hearing to amend the budget this, this year in 2020, um, you just include a line item in those three funds that, um, really is, is set aside money to reduce that deficit by at least 5% of the budgeted revenue. Um, and as long as that's in there, then you don't want to use that budget, so then at the end of the period, you have a, a net profit that's gonna roll into that fund balance that's gonna decrease that deficit position until it's eliminated. Um, a couple of them are pretty small. I know the EMS is, is a larger amount that it's in a deficit position, so it might take a few years for that to, to go away. But as long as you, uh, when we review the budget, that I can see the line item that, that has a 5% reduction, and then it actually reduces that every year, um, then that finding will, will be taken care of. All right, and then the last one, this is kind of a tic-tac finding, but I know that the state auditors are really big on their public notice website. Um, so when we review the, the publication notifications for, um, the public hearings, um, we noted that in the local newspapers and in a couple of public places that they were, um, the public hearings were identified, they were advertised like they were required to be, um, in the, in the time that it had to be required, so everything was, was good except for, um, you have to post those public hearing notices to the Utah Public Notice website. Um, and this is the same website where you would post all of your commission meeting agendas and the minutes, um, and any other public meetings that you have. Um, the, the minutes and things need to be pub, published to this website. And I realize that in San Juan County, most people probably don't go to that website to find out when the public hearings are gonna be or when the commission, commission meetings are gonna be, uh, but that's a requirement by the state auditor. So really, our recommendation is just to remember to, when you're, when you're sending it to the newspapers, that you hop on and publish, publish those notifications on the website as well as, um, the local places that you do down in the county. Um, so all three of those findings, that last finding, I think it's, you know, gonna get taken care of. Um, just remember to budget for the 5% reduction in your deficit net position. Um, and then on the budgetary compliance, just, you know, be aware, you as a commission really should be getting financial reports and a, and a part of those on a, on a monthly basis. Um, and a, and a part of those financial reports should be a budget actual report, so you should know, you know, throughout the year, which departments or which funds are getting close to being over their budget. And then, you know, John David and Mac can, can assess, like the general fund, and they can move department, move budgets from department to department. If it goes from fund to fund, then you as a commission need to approve that, and then if it increases the overall budget, you know, if you need to budget more money, then, then you'll have to have a, a public hearing to do that. Um, just a couple of things on the financial statements. Um, it was good to see that the general fund had, uh, uh, positive net income, uh, if you will, for the year. Um, I think it was about a million dollars, so, um, I know over the last few years it's kind of trickled down, um, year by year. Uh, so it was good to see that, that your, that your general fund had a, had a good increase in fund balance this year. Um, and then John David is actually gonna transfer some more money out of the tax stability fund. That needs to stay at 7.5 million, and currently, well, as of December 31st, it was at 7.8, and I think it's at 7.9 million right now, so he'll be transferring some more money into the general fund. Um, I know that there were some big expenditures that the county was concerned about during 2020, so that, that'll go a long way to help that out. Um, other than that, I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns or, um, you'll notice in the financial statements, we did add a subsequent event note, um, for the COVID-19. Um, and really, this is kind of a liability protection for the county. Um, it, it's probably more so for private industries, but in government as well. Um, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen over the next couple of years. Um, you know, where the economy's gonna be, if it's gonna rebound, if it's gonna go and throw us into another recession for a couple of years. Um, and so really, the note disclosure just describes that the COVID-19 was, you know, happened after year end, but the readers of the financial statements need to know that it's out there, um, and that it could potentially affect the county. Um, how much is kind of an unknown right now. But, you know, you as a county commission really just need to, um, identify where it's gonna hurt the most. Um, I just met with the county last week, and I think they lost about 60% of their TRT tax for the, for the year so far, um, which was kind of a big hit for them. Um, you know, some of the other ones are gonna be, you know, sales taxes is gonna be down, property taxes. Um, you know, you're not really sure how or how many people are gonna pay their property taxes on time. Um, you know, with the, with the mortgage things, uh, you don't know if people are gonna be paying the mortgage on time. Therefore, the escrow's not gonna be paying the property tax on time. Um, and I think they have a, a, a range of five years in order to pay those property taxes. Um, and so, you know, y- yes, you will get the revenue, but it may, may be spread out over a few years instead of all in one year. Um, so just be aware of those situations. I'm sure that you guys are looking at it and that you're aware of it. Uh, but all of those things are gonna affect the county, and so if, if expenditures need to decrease in order to, you know, kind of maintain your general fund balance, then, um, just be aware of those situations. And really, this is just kind of recommendations going forward, um, and things that we saw in reviewing the financial statements and meeting with other counties and, and other municipalities throughout the state. Um, so you're not alone in the boat. Everybody's in the same boat together. Um, but just be aware of those situations. Um, let's see. Like I said, um, the EMS is the most significant in the deficit, um, unreserved fund balance. Um, you know, their, their total net position is only about $100,000 in the hole. Um, but their unreserved is about a million in the hole, and that is because they have so much invested in capital assets. And over time, those capital assets are gonna depreciate, so, you know, just by their nature, that number's gonna decrease, which is gonna increase your unreserved fund balance. But, um, in the short term, you just want to make sure that you have a net profit in the EMS fund. Um, especially where it's a business-type fund, it really should be paying for itself. Um, that's the whole point of a proprietary-type fund or an enterprise fund is they're treated more like a business, so the fees that they set really should be, um, helping it maintain itself independent of any other fund. Let's see, I think that's all I had. I don't know if any commissioners, if you have any questions?
Thank you very much, John. Um, commission, motion would be in order?
Hold move.
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and do I have a second for this discussion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Okay, now, uh, any questions or comment for Mr., Mr., um, uh, John that made a report before us? Thank you very much, uh, John, and, um, certainly we will focus on and with these hard times, things are kind of difficult, and, um, I'm sure that, uh, Mr. McDonald will bring some of those tensions to us to, uh, to deal with, and thank you very much.
You bet. It's always a pleasure to work with the county. I wish I was down there meeting with you. I like coming down. So maybe next time.
Maybe next time, yeah.
Thanks.
And next time.
Vote.
All those. Once, once again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Mac, the next item.
Okay, the next one is consideration of public health contract with Department of Environmental Quality for environmental services. For your consideration, with them will be presented by as, as well as the next item on the agenda as well.
Uh, yeah. So this is actually a contract that, um, is a renewal. We've had a contract with DEQ uh, for these same services every year since I've been here, but I think it's the first time it's actually come before the commission for review. Um, just I guess an overall summary would be that this contract with DEQ covers services that, um, locally to ensure enforcement and compliance with um, state rules and regulations regarding air quality, drinking water activities, um, underground storage tanks, waste management, uh, used oil, uh, water quality in general, other than drinking water, and, uh, and then other potential issues that might be arise or need to be addressed, uh, throughout the year. Uh, so the, um, overall contract, uh, has um, very, very similar to previous years. Um, DEQ agrees to pay us up to $73,974 for costs that we incur, uh, in, in those activities. I guess, are there any questions about that?
Moment will be in order?
The signing of the contract?
Hello? Motion? Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Okay, Mr. Adams, uh, what was your, uh, question?
I didn't. I just made motion.
This is hard to hear. I keep picking up.
There's an echo in the phone every now and then.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gray Eyes. You have a second by Commissioner Adams.
Okay, good. Now, uh, questions or comments to either? If there be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you very much. Okay, Mac, uh, take us on down to, uh, uh, San Juan Local Health Department Contract Training.
It is moving to present by third again.
Yeah, so this is a new contract, uh, that was just pushed out by the state. Um, uh, essentially, this is a contract to give a little bit of the CARES Act money to the local health department to assist us in improving our capacity to do contact tracing locally. Um, we would anticipate hiring a couple of part-time individuals to help us reach out to, um, infected individuals that have recently been diagnosed with coronavirus infection, um, to, um, help, you know, determine whom else might have been exposed, to give them good messaging on how to prevent, um, continued exposure and, and make sure that we're doing all the contact tracing and identifying anybody that might be at risk. Um, right now, we're, um, basically working at capacity. We've got, um, we recently hired, uh, Joy Drake from Monticello and Rebecca Benali, um, locally down on the South End to assist us with contact tracing. Uh, they're charging some of their hours to other coronavirus-related contracts. Um, we'd probably have them switch their time to, uh, to charge their time to this contract moving forward. Um, but basically, it's to help us, uh, keep on some temporary employees, absorb some of those costs as we try to address issues related to coronavirus outbreak and the continuation of it.
Uh, is that a motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Um, questions? How much will these, uh, temporary positions be paying?
Uh, they're currently being paid $16 an hour.
Okay. Any other questions or comment, commissioners? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye by Commissioner Adams and aye by Commissioner Gray Eyes. You have two ayes, and I will abstain this one.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Mac, can, next item, Kendall Oz?
So commissioners, I, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Commissioners, this is, this is something that's been in before you, oh, last year. It, it came before you. It comes before the commissioners just about every year. Um, this, this resolution is just, it's required by the, the attorneys who are working on the central tax assessment appeals. If you remember back to the last time we discussed this, it was, what it is, is there are certain industries, um, the, the major utilities, for example, pipelines, uh, power companies, et cetera, that are, instead of being taxed, property taxed at the county level, they're centrally taxed at the state level. And those, some of those entities religiously appeal that, the taxing decision by the state and central assessment. Um, and this is just one of those. We've, we've been working on it for, for a while. Um, it's because it comes up every year. Mac and, and I have talked to, have, have had emails back and forth with the attorney in this case. If you remember as well, um, our portion of the attorney's fees in these matters is, is just reflective of our portion of um, the tax of the property that is being taxed. So it's 10% of the property from, from. So it's ten percent of the property from, from Mid-America Pipeline is in San Juan County, then ten percent of the attorney bill is San Juan County's to bear. Um, our options really with this resolution are to either pass it and, and, uh, and defend the assessment and defend our, what, what we are trying to get out of the property tax assessment on in this case, or do nothing and run the risk of, of losing some of our, some of our bigger tax, uh, property taxpayers in the county. And so, um, my recommendation would be, just like it has been every year in the past, to approve this resolution and allow us to defend our position to get us, to, to, uh, defend the state's position of, of this property tax assessment in this matter.
Okay, um, the motion would be in order?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Commissioner Adams, do I have a second?
Second, uh, what's a question?
Okay.
Uh, what precipitated this, uh, action? Mr. Oz?
So, to, to answer that question, um, what, what happens is every year the state tax commission comes up with a central tax assessment for, uh, the different companies. In this case, it's Rocky Mountain Power. So they assess their assets and, and, and all of their property statewide, and then they divvy up the portion of those assets that, that are in each individual county. Um, and so all of the power lines, substations, um, power plants, if, if, if there are any, uh, all of that is taken into account and is, and taxed. And so then if the company, in this case, Rocky Mountain Power disagrees with that assessment, or they want to challenge it, um, and like I said, some of these companies do it every year, um, on the, like clockwork, they do it every year. And, uh, and so they file an appeal to challenge the assessment from the state, and then it's up to the, the counties and, and the state to defend that valuation uh, in order to not see, you know, the, the, so then, then the, the tax commission and then eventually possibly even district court has the option to either support that, uh, the finding by the tax commission, or they could, they could cut the taxes back considerably in favor of the, of the corporation. And so it, this, this lawsuit is every year is renewed and is precipitated by the company, the different corporations, you typically utilities, um, challenging their, their tax assessment by the state of Utah.
Okay. Is that other, how did it affect it by this?
Yes, so, so this, the one in front of you is Rocky Mountain Power, so, um, just about any, probably just about every, every county in the state of Utah is affected by this particular one. Um, and so it, that's why it's important to note from a financial perspective that San Juan County only, only pays the portion of attorney's fees that, that correlates with the percentage of the property found in, in, in our county. So for example, with Rocky Mountain Power, we have, we have some substations, we have some power lines, um, but that, that value is going to be probably considerably less than Emery County, for example, that has two power plants that are power generating plants that are owned by Rocky Mountain Power. And so Emery County's portion would be of the attorney's fees would be significantly higher probably than San Juan's because they stand to lose a significant, significantly higher amount of money than San Juan County does if the, if, if Rocky Mountain Power were to prevail on this lawsuit, on this appeal.
They just said how they, how they gets into, uh, legal matters, uh, against companies that are established by the state. So, I don't know where we're going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray Eyes. Any other comments?
If I may, just to add to what our county attorney had mentioned, the, um, the valuation, um, on here is for, for the Rocky Mountain Power, I was just looking through, uh, there, as an electric utility company, um, their valuation is estimated at that seven point five billion. Um, the difference in value that they're, they're trying to, to reduce is um, about four hundred and forty-six million. Um, and so that's a huge valuation difference and it looks like all of the counties throughout the state of Utah are actually affected. The only one that hasn't checked the box is Wayne County. Um, showing that they're not affected, but everybody else is, looks like on this centrally assessed valuation appeal form is, um, pretty much affected with that valuation. So, large companies just, they're trying to find any loophole to not pay their total fair market value, and that's what we're trying. Hopefully that adds a little clarity to it.
Okay, any other comment questions, commissioners? There be none, no, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye by Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Gray Eyes, and thank you very much, I as well. Um, next item, the, uh, the approval of twenty-twenty primary election canvas. John?
Good morning, commissioners, um.
Good morning, sir.
So, we had in, uh, the end of June, the twenty-twenty uh, Republican primary election, um, and, and, and what we need to do today is just to canvas those results and, and have the commission e- accept the results that, that came in from that election. Um, I emailed you, um, the, the report that, that indicated the turnout and, and the results, but I can go over that with you. Um, i- in the county, um, it wa- we only had races that where, where the Republican Party needed to narrow down candidates for the general election. Um, we had the Republican, um, governor and lieutenant governor race, the Republican Attorney General race, the County Commission District One race, uh, the County Recorder race and the County Assessor race. Um, and fro- from those races, um, i- in San Juan County, Greg Hughes, who was, uh, uh, running for, uh, for governor, um, he garnered the most votes from the county with nine hundred and ninety-nine. John Huntsman, uh, was second with four, four seventy-six. Spencer Cox was third with four twenty-three and Tom, Thomas Wright was fourth with two hundred and fifty. For the Attorney General, David Levitt, um, he obtained one thousand one hundred and thirteen votes, and Sean Reyes, um, received nine hundred and fifty votes. For County Commission District One, um, Bruce Adams uh, received six hundred and sixty-three votes and Cheryl Bowers received five hundred and ninety-eight votes. Uh, in the County Recorder Race, Cindy Holyoke received one thousand two hundred and thirteen votes and David Carpenter received eight hundred and eighty-six votes. In the County Assessor Race, Rick Meyer received one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine votes and Logan Boyd received seven hundred and fifteen votes. Um, we had a, we had a number of, of ballots that were rejected, um. Uh, we had three ballots that, that we did not count because they did not have a, they didn't sign the affidavit. There was no signature attached. Um, had ten ballots where the signature did not match. Eight ballots were returned late. Uh, six, six had a, were other for various reasons, they either voted on election day or, or returned a ballot from a different election, and, and two provisional ballots were rejected. So those are kind of the numbers from, from the election, and we just need your approval to, uh, to certify the, that information that, that it is accurate.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams, and, uh, congratulations to those that were inscribed as the, uh, the winning individuals in their respectable position. Um, any other questions or comments before we, uh, move on? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, and, um, give up your good work, John, and, um, uh, Mac, did you, uh, take us to the next, uh, items?
Absolutely. The next one is the consideration of agreement with Lynn Lloyd Cresswell in San Juan County for services as an appointed administrative law judge for the county. This one will be presented by Walter Berg, or HR or Planning Director.
Okay. Walter?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can.
Okay, so this is an agreement for administrative law judge services. We've reached out to Lynn Cresswell, who has over, I think, thirty-five years' experience as an attorney and, uh, hearing officer for the city of Salt Lake, Salt Lake, so he's very experienced in, in what he does. What, what the ALJ does for a little background is he, under our ordinance, we need an ALJ to hear appeals for, for employee grievances. Um, we also have disputes involving, involving land use, businesses and other administrative regulations that, that, from time to time, an ALJ needs to hear. So Lynn has agreed, if, if the commission will approve this contract, to do this work at a rate of, I believe, a hundred dollars an hour for his services, and then we'll take care of any travel-related expenses as he comes down from the Salt Lake area to, to do these things. Um, he also requests that he be involved in any training that, that I receive or others receive in, in HR and land use planning, so he can know what our code says and he can know what the law is and, and what he needs to apply. Um, he's already done several cases for us several years ago and did an excellent job for us at, at that time. He then went on a, a church service mission for a period of time and he, he's come back from that, and he's interested in continuing work with San Juan County, so. Any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams, and do I have a second? Second, I have a second, the second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions or comment?
First question?
Sure.
Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Uh, funding, do we have sufficient dollars in the, in the bag somewhere? For COVID costs?
Well, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to guess what you're gonna have to spend on this per year. Hopefully you spend zero on it each year, because it's one of those things, we may not use him for a year or two, but I believe we have room in the budget to cover any expenses for work he needs to do.
The list commissioner is, uh, one of those contracts that you pay, you pay him if you use them. Uh, and so as of right now, um, there's nothing that we would use him on, so if there were, we would just make sure that we, we can account for that utilization of his funding and service. And so as we get into, if we ever get into an appeal process, we would then call on his contracted services to, um, to be that law judge for these appeals. Hopefully we never have to use it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we only use them when we need to, that's, that's the, the issue. Um, any other comment questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Adams, and. Okay. All ayes, I vote aye too, so, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, Mac, next item.
The next item on your agenda is consideration of agreement with the Utah Department of Heritage and Arts, the Utah State Library Division, uh, and San Juan County Library System for the purchase of digital content in Overdrive. I'll turn to Nicole, who's on here as well, to give this presentation. Nicole, you're on mute. Perfect, there you go.
Okay, and this is just, uh, a contract that we have been entering in with the Utah State Library, and we choose to be part of what's called the Bee, what they've recently renamed the Beehive Library Consortium. But in order to do that, we agreed to spend so much of our collection development money, um, into Overdrive, which is digital, uh, uh, material. And the advantage of doing that is we have access to all the other libraries that join this consortium, or our patrons. But we are obligated to spend, um, so much and on that collection development and the, the option I'd like to take, we have a couple of options, the, one is to allow the, um, Utah State Library to choose all of our material that our money pays for, and the other is we get to choose fifty percent and the Utah State Library picks the other fifty percent. And I'd, I'd like to choose the option too, so that we have some control over what we purchase and kind of match it with what the needs of our patrons in our area and our, the interests of our patrons in our county. Um, this, this is based on, uh, our two thousand nineteen uh, collection development total and our, uh, collection circulation in Overdrive. And I'm trying to find the total, the total that we will be obligated to pay into Overdrive this year. Um, will be, I think it's like twelve hundred dollars, I'm trying to find that total.
Sixteen hundred and seventy-eight.
Sixteen, oh, thank you. I still don't see it. Anyway, sixteen hundred. Yes, and, and that will be due to them the beginning of next year. So we'd just like approval to go ahead and enter into that agreement from the commissioners.
Motion been made by Commissioner Adams for approval, do I have a second?
Second, uh, question?
By Commissioner Gray Eyes, question, Commissioner Gray Eyes.
How much did you say?
One thousand, and I'm, I can't see the total on here.
On page two, the bottom.
Page two.
Okay.
Bottom and page.
Oh, yes, there it is, okay. Yes, one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which is.
That amount will be what?
That ma- amount will be due, uh, in January of twenty twenty-one. And, and then that allows us to be a part of the entire cor- uh, consortium and opens up a lot more than that for our patrons to use by us contributing that amount. It's a, it's a really. How would the county benefit? Well, if we, if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be allowed to be part of the consortium and then would be on our own, and then our content that would be available to the patrons in the area. And then our content that would be available to the patrons in the area would be a, a lot more constricted, um, a lot less choices. And especially where we live in a really rural area, obviously, and there's a lot of people that travel. They listen to the, they use the Overdrive quite a bit. And we're seeing that being used more and more. And I think it's gonna be a continuing trend for years to come. Did, did that answer the question?
Um. Is there on the radio?
Um, no, like if you have a Kindle or you have any kind of electronic device, you can download, uh, and listen to books or you, if, um, they have eBooks as well, where you can download on a Kindle and read it on your Kindle device. But mostly, most of what we're seeing with our patrons, they're downloading to listen like as they drive. So it's, it, it's done on a digital device. It, it's accessed through a digital device, like either through your laptop or your phone or an iPod.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Um, if not, uh, I guess we're up for, uh, calling for the questions. All those in favor in, um.
Aye.
This item.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Um, Mac, next item?
Okay, the next one is a resolution in agreement with San Juan County. In the San Juan County Library Services for library services on Navajo Mountain. This one will be presented by Nicole, as well as the following one. Following item on your agenda is the similar resolution for the agreement, but for Monument Valley. So both of these presented by Nicole.
Okay.
Okay.
So. Okay, so both, so these are contracts that we've been entering with the, um, the school district. And they benefit the communities in both Moni, Monument Valley and Navajo Mountain. And this year, the contracts have just been, um, become a, a better, tighter agreement with the help of Mac and our county attorney. Where before it was pretty loose and pretty open. And so now there's more teeth to it to hold the district accountable, to make sure those communities are receiving the services that we're helping to supplement through this grant. Um, basically, we just agreed to pay the school district so much money each year. And we actually had, um, a surplus left over. And so I just went, I went through and divided up that surplus between both schools. And then we agreed to pay another two thousand five hundred dollars, or that's what we're proposing to do anyway. And then that would help those schools to, uh, pay a librarian that the district has employed to keep those libraries open after hours. Of course, this all depends on if the schools open up again with the COVID-19 concerns. But once they open again, then they would be open after hours between six and eight hours each week at consistent times, and it would be available to the entire public. And we've put a few other provisions in there such as, um, asking that they spend fifty percent of what they spend on collection development on adult materials so that it includes us, um, appeal to the entire communities there. And so we just would like to have your, um, signature and your approval on this. And then once you approve, we will need the school districts to approve as well.
Almost. Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Uh, the motion is set to where it's, uh, also approval on, under request as well, right?
I don't know.
I understand.
Well, before I confuse the situation, let's assume that, uh, the request by Nicole has been made to, in support, that's already in the motion as well. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
And, um, Mr. McDonald used a stamp to, uh, uh, for the signature on the request that Nicole asked.
Okay, no problem. The, um, on the, the second resolution for Monument Valley, I also need a separate approval for that one as well.
Almost.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Gray Eyes and second by Commissioner Adams. And, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Nicole. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. The next item on your agenda is, um, item J, consideration of Cow Black Airport Design Contract with J Aviation. Um, this one here is, um, an amendment to our original contract with J Aviation, which began back in twenty sixteen. This one now allows them to not only be a consultant, but also be the design and engineer for the project. Now, we've been working on this for several meetings to get to this point, um, with you and kind of the cost, uh, agreements that we've gone through to make sure that we have cost as well as, um, a backup check on those additional costs through, um, additional engineering checks. This contract here, just as a reminder, is for the design of the rehabilitation and lighting replacement project at Cow Black Airport. The total amount for this, this contract is five hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. The, um, contracted in the award itself will be fully funded by the FAA. I have a grant, uh, application or a grant, um, reward application on my desk. I, I didn't tell you yesterday, so I couldn't place it on the agenda where we were outside of the log. Um, but we do have the fund application or the award letter that needs to be signed and authorizing. From the FAA, they're actually willing one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, which will cover, uh, the aviation contract of five hundred and eighty-two thousand, um, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-six cents in this contract. And so it's kind of a wash this year if you derive with putting in construction management costs, knowing that the FAA was covering one hundred percent of everything. And so we're trying to get as much as we can. And then next year, we'll be working on, after we get the design and the estimate, we'll be working on the actual funding package to complete the project. Any questions?
Ask.
Yeah.
Motion by Gray Eyes.
Is there a process of soliciting, uh, invitation for, for other to be considered?
So on the engineering, they've worked with us on the master plan and the design all along. And so the original solicitation took place back in twenty sixteen. And you contracted with them to do the engineering, uh, and master planning for this project already. What we did is we went out and solicited, once they had their original cost estimate, we solicited another vendor to check their costs, to make sure that everything was in line. And this is all, um, a requirement and a process that's formulated by, um, the Federal Aviation Administration. And so we've been following their rules and their pursuit for the process.
Again, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Adams and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Now, question? There is no question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mac. Next item?
Okay, this is the final item on your agenda, the consideration, um, of a resolution condemning racism and supporting civil rights for all. Uh, if you'd like Commissioners, I can read this resolution to you in its entire.
Read the, read the resolution into the record so we can, uh, establish a motion to.
The, the resolution condemning racism and supporting civil rights for all. State, whereas the San Juan County Board of Commissioners is saddened and concerned by the ongoing tragic events occurring across the country. And whereas the San Juan County Board of Commissioners is expressly opposed to racism, bigotry, hate, and violence in any form. And whereas the San Juan County Board of Commissioners is committed to actively working against the damage of Mexican racism and to ensuring institutional rights of every person who lives, works, and visits San Juan County. And whereas people of all races, ethnicities, cultures, who base actively contributes to San Juan County's strength, well-being, cultural history, and general makeup of who we are and what we implore. And whereas the San Juan County Board of Commissioners will continue to be honest and transparent with internal and external stakeholders and will continue to build on the cultural trust within the community. And whereas San Juan County Board of Commissioners will direct and guide county staff to be inclusive in all operations to promote equality and caring and retention practices, as well as encouraging businesses in the community to do likewise. And whereas in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and visitors, San Juan County Board of Commissioners, which is to condemn racism, free hate, and violence at any level, now be able to resolve the, that the Board of San Juan County Commissioners pass, adopted, and approved by the Board of San Juan County Commissioners this twenty-first of July by the following vote.
Thank you very much. Motion, uh, motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Um, thank you very much. Um, uh, speaking to that issue, um, I'd like to, uh, make, uh, a, a report. Maybe might be, uh, a finer place to inscribe that. I like the, uh, the public safety, which I think they do their best to oversee our community and our people. But there's a highway patrol out there that seems to be taking some, some really great consideration into what he does, uh, nitpicking on people. Um, writing out tickets left and right for certain vehicles in San Juan County. But if you go up to Salt Lake, there's some vehicles that are being sold exactly like the way people are driving down here. He seemed to be stopping people for tended windows, big tires, lift-up vehicle, and with the exhaust pipes. And nobody seemed to be bothering these people besides him. If you go up to Moak, that's where it starts. And to me, that's just nitpicking and, and pushing people over the edge. A lot of our people out here lost their vehicles, been impounded, and some went to jail because they tried to speak for themselves. And I'm talking about Charlie Taylor, the San Juan, uh, Highway Patrol. Maybe the governor needs to know about it. Maybe the guy needs to be relocated or something. So, uh, with that, um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Consider those, uh, those, um, remarks, uh, McDonald, and use my, uh, stamp to, uh, signature the, uh, the resolution.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, report. Um, either one of you would like to, uh, start?
Well, uh, I'll start, uh, Gray Eyes. So the, uh, thing that I had there was the, uh, Seven Cardy Coalition. Uh, we had a, a, uh, a good meeting up in Ridgefield. Uh, giving, uh, some time to report overall, uh, profile on different projects. And the main thing that the, uh, Coalition Board of Directors were looking at was the, uh, access, how much progress we made with the, uh, between the tribes and the, uh, and the chapter as far as the, uh, the Jito, Dalawam, and the special. So we gave an update, um, Mr. Hank Stevens, my chapter officer, president, and myself. We also invited, uh, Davis Gilbert, uh, Gilbert from, uh, also the president, vice president, but, uh, he was denied, uh, travel authorization to, um, due to the COVID-nineteen increase in the state of Utah and also state of Arizona. So that was the main practice. So other than that, locally, we are coordinating, uh, local chapter meetings, planning meetings, uh, or do, okay, uh. As far as, uh, coordinating activities, communicating with the, uh, uh, winter office, tribal government, uh, it's kind of difficult to, uh, to do that because of the, uh, people that were, uh, that were working there or homebound working. So, um, that can come to, uh, a burden for us. So exactly as the hardly, uh, taken place remains a mystery almost for chapters, uh, we plan to, uh, continue to, uh, submit resolutions. Uh, not only those matters and issues related to COVID-19, but, uh, other, um, non-affected, um, COVID-19 issues. So I don't know how it could be handled. As the Navajo Nation Government has issued that we're supposed to be meeting on matters only related to COVID-19. So, um, to me, that doesn't really cut, uh, cut the case. Uh, so they're amazing questions. So that will be my report, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Bruce?
Uh, I'd just like to remind the other two Commissioners that the San Juan County Fair starts, uh, the first week of August, month through the third to the eighth. And, um, all, uh, uh, applicable rules from the Health Department will apply. And, um, uh, you're all welcome, all the citizens in the county are welcome to come to the fair. It's a great event. And I will be participating in a, in a CIB virtual meeting on the sixth. Uh, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Uh, good reports. Um, I will be around. Uh, we've been, uh, meeting, the Navajo Uta Commission met and Red Mesa Chapter, and a lot of questions to the, um, to the roads and also a lot of questions to, uh, to the schools. I know that the, um, it's getting close to, uh, have our kids re-register at schools. But, uh, it looks like the majority of the, uh, the Uta Navajos are, are not in favor of having their kids return back to school with all this, uh, virus around. And those are some of the resolutions that were passed. And you will probably. And it will probably come before us soon in time. And then other than that, Anna Boynton and I, we've been on calls every now and then to talk about certain needs to certain areas on the, on San Juan County, the Uta Navajos. And also Anna Chapter had their meeting. And one of the main topics that they had there was, of course, the roads. And the paved roads are getting really bad. And it looks like the nation is not doing anything about it. So it looks like we might have to take some extreme measures to see what we can do to retake over some of these roads. So basically, those are, those are the things that are happening. And the other thing is that we have communities that we're losing. And one of the big issue is the San Juan retirement home and blinding, how people got all infected. And of course, one of my grandfather passed away not too long ago. And people are in the hospital. So those things are starting to arise and questions left and right. So I will continue to monitor those and be involved, engage with the community. So that's the extent of my report. And commissioners, thank you very much. And community members, thank you very much for listening in. And we will begin the next commission meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. All those in favor that would like to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you very much and have a wonderful day.